There's no rhyme or end.
I have a passion for money.
I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone and welcome everyone who is watching from home. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee De Boer?
Present.
Trustee Gett? Trustee Kazam?
Present.
Trustee Reichert?
Present.
Trustee Wigginton?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
All right, welcome everyone. We have a quorum. Moving on to approval of the Board of Trustees' minutes from January 21, 2025. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions on the minutes or corrections to? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next is comments from the audience on agenda items. If anyone's here tonight to address the board on agenda items, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Welcome.
Hi there, my name is Tammy Roush and the reason that I'm here tonight is we're requesting the village to put a handicap parking spot for my husband out in front of our house. We have the handicap placard, which is one of the requirements. We have proof of residency and then we also have a note from the doctor stating his disability. We don't have onsite parking and so that's why we're requesting to have the spot.
Thank you for being here. We may have you come back up when we get to that item to answer some questions, so thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment, gone once, twice. Comments from the audience, closed. Next is old business. Any old business to come before the board? Hearing none, we'll get right into new business. The first is a piece as for, from administration and finance, approval of the consent agenda. Trustee De Boer, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
There's a second. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee De Boer?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Trustee De Boer, anything under administration or finance you'd like to discuss?
Nothing else today, Mayor.
Thank you. We'd be at public safety. We have one item. It's a request to approve a handicap sign in 1107 East Manita by Gary Roush. Trustee Wigginton, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the request for a handicap sign in 1107 East Manita.
Second.
All right, go right ahead.
Well, as Ms. Roush timely stated, I appreciate you coming up here, Tammy. So, the Roushs have found themselves in a little bit of a pickle, from what I understand. They have no way to park other than the street. So, their property does not have a driveway, does not have a garage. The only way for them to park their vehicles is on the street. The challenging thing is, and I appreciate you bringing the topic up, Ms. Roush, is Mr. Roush is handicapped and not always, from what I understand, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, do they have availability directly in front of their home, which makes it, again, challenging for a handicapped person to reach their front, literally their property. So, what they're asking for today is that we place as a village, handicap sign. I did go and look through our ordinances to, the village board has this right to do this. The police chief does have the ability to make exceptions, but not to this extent. So, this does need board approval if we were going to allow for this. So, that is why the Roushs have approached the board and appreciate them being here. If any of us have further questions on this.
Have we ever been faced with this question in the past?
So, I think that we've had in the past, and this was before I was on the board, but in the past, we've had some requests for closing parking off certain sides of the street, which became challenging for handicapped people when we were closing parking on certain sides of the street. We have never had, from my understanding, a specific request for an individual parking, handicap parking.
I don't recall any.
To me, it looks like the house property is pretty long, like wide. How, unless I saw the wrong property. So, it looks like there's three, like you could at least get three car lengths in front of the house. So, is it a specific location we're looking to do it in front of that property or, like, because I think the neighbor to, on the one side, the driveway comes right to their property. So, are we looking to have a parking spot put right there? Like, where's the parking spot?
So, I think it would be our prerogative, as far, you know, it's the board's prerogative of where we place it. But, you know, for the, I'm sure the Roushs would appreciate it being in close proximity to their, to their house.
Ms. Roush, could you come over for a second? Could you point out the house, just so I know what I'm looking at?
It's the tan one, right?
Is this the property where you?
Yes, it's the tan one. The driveway here goes to the house. So, go ahead. I was gonna say the...
Be careful your step.
Just so we can get this recorded, would you mind going to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Okay, so, the handicap that Gary has is he has asthma. His asthma is getting worse. He's had it since he was 12 years old. He can't, if we park two or three spots from, in front of our house, by the time he gets into the house, he has to use his inhaler because he's starting to have an asthma attack. And so, that's why we're requesting, oh, excuse me, that's why we're requesting the spot in front of the home, so he doesn't have to walk as far to get into the house and it doesn't affect his breathing. Because the last thing we want to do is have to take him to the emergency room for walking into the house.
Is it, like, a common occurrence that the parking is, the street parking is taken up in front of your house?
Unfortunately, yes, because the neighbors that live next door to us, they have four vehicles. Yes, they have a driveway, but they'll take one of their vehicles, park it right in front of our house, so we can't park there. And they leave it there for one to two weeks at a time. Sorry, I get a little emotional about it because it's, it's his health.
Do you have a placard on your car that allows you to use handicap parking, like at Walmart and Kroger?
Just, just this one here. This one here that they gave us. It's a temporary one.
Okay.
Until we can apply for a permanent one.
Okay. You've just recently applied for that?
Yes, yes. Because like I said, his last trip to the doctor, you know, his asthma is getting worse. He's, his family has a history of it and they eventually wind up on oxygen and COPD. And so, that's what we're working with.
Have we, have we done anything on the police side to, like, maybe ask the neighbors if they could not park there?
So, yeah, so the exact same, because freshly reading the parking ordinances, the thing that she, Ms. Roush just said there was cars were parked two, three weeks.
That's a violation.
That's a violation.
Yeah.
So, that, that is certainly something that could be addressed from the police perspective.
I mean, because even if we put, I want to make sure that you can get into your home, so please don't take it that I'm trying to argue that by any stretch of the means. But, we can put the handicap sign there all day long, but then we also have to enforce it, right? So, then that's gonna create another situation. So, I'm like, can we go with the route of trying to have a conversation with the neighbors, trying to get them if they're violating on the couple of weeks of them being parked there, like?
Well, and see, we've gone, we've gone with the route because they've actually parked vehicles there that have had expired plates. So, two or three times, we've had to call to get those moved because the plates are expired. So, then we're able to park there, but it's, because they have, like, four vehicles, they have a camper in their driveway, and they have another vehicle that they don't drive that's not registered.
Do you own the home?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, what they'll do is, they'll take that vehicle, if it's been parked there for, like, two weeks, they'll move that vehicle out and then put one of the other vehicles there. So, they play yo-yo back and forth.
Okay, but you've had the conversation with them, how important that parking spot is to the well-being?
Unfortunately, it's gotten to the point to where we don't talk, because we've had such issues with them over when we put our fence up, that we don't converse with them. We let the law enforcement talk with them.
One of the things I want to avoid, and I'm not saying this is the case.
No.
It makes me a little nervous. One, we haven't done this before.
Mm-hmm.
And two, this kinda feels like a neighbor, neighbor dispute to me. But, I think if you get the placard from the state that says, hey, this person has a verifiable handicap and needs close parking, that would satisfy me.
The permanent one?
Yeah, yeah, as long as they had that designation from the state, or however those are issued.
So, rather than the temporary one, to try to get a permanent one?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
I don't know how those things work. Like, if you get a temporary one, does that mean, I know how long the state takes, does that mean that at some point you're gonna get the permanent one?
Yeah.
Okay.
See, we just have to get something else from the doctor stating that this is a permanent disability.
Right.
The doctor stated the reason on the note, on the doctor's note that we have here. It's just an application for the placard for the disability and why he's requesting it. So, if we go back to them and talk to them and see if we can get a permanent one, we can certainly do that.
That would make me feel better. You know, as a neighbor, if I was your neighbor, I would make sure I didn't park in that spot.
Right. And it's not so much that it's a neighbor dispute as it is, yeah, we don't get along with them, but it's the fact that it's getting hard for us to be able to park there so that he can walk just straight into the house rather than having to go three spots down.
Right.
Have you guys searched, have you guys gone down the avenue of possibly putting in, like, a half driveway there just for him to pull into? Like, a little gravel driveway or anything? It looks like you've got, and I'm not, I'm not against doing this at all, but I'm just looking at other options, too. Have you gone down that road at all to see what it would take to just put a little half driveway for him to pull the car into?
No, as far as that goes, no. We have not.
And just one other thing, Mayor. One of the things I would be also interested in is if we do this, if everyone started applying for this.
Trustee Weisenberg, you just said what I was gonna say to conclude this, but go ahead.
I don't think, I don't know how many people have the state permanent placards in their cars, but I could imagine a point where, even if you had a driveway, you could still apply for it.
I don't think you'd get it from the state, though, if they, they have to have, be able to prove that they do not have off-street parking to get it from the state level.
Oh, is that, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so the state does require?
The Roushs have met the requirements. Okay. No on-street, or, excuse me, no on-property parking, handicap placard. Now, you guys can request the permanent one.
Okay.
But for this to open up a Pandora's box, they would have to meet the same requirements that the Roushs did.
Oh, okay. Well, that makes me feel a lot better.
I mean, it does set a precedence, though, because other, like, how many other people don't have on-property parking, right? And do we have a limit? Like, I feel like for us to approve it, we would also need to talk about, like, what would our ordinance look like to include that? I mean, is this common in other municipalities, Council, like?
No, it's not.
Well, so, let me just, go ahead.
I've never experienced it before. I've been a municipal attorney for 15 years and I've never seen it, but that doesn't mean that it's inappropriate in any way.
Sure. I just was, like, trying to think if I had seen it in a residential neighborhood, like, somewhere else, like. Then my other question was, with the Healthy Homes or any of the HUD grants, could we help them get a driveway by chance, or that's not something that they could apply for?
It's not a part of the current grant that we have, the Healthy Homes Grant. There could be some other, you know, we've talked about how do we help with the residential areas, maybe through TIF or others. So, that's, that would be a judgment if it does qualify for some of those resources.
Okay.
So, I, I, Trustee Weisenberg nailed it. I am very sympathetic and I would like to help them accomplish what they're setting out to do. However, please keep in mind, there are lots of homes in Peoria Heights that don't have driveways and we have, in some neighborhoods, I would say, would probably have an elderly population. So, I would strongly encourage you, if you're going to approve this tonight or in the future, that you would have a policy in place, because by taking these requests, I think, on a case-by-case basis, I think you're gonna get into trouble. I think it would be very helpful to have a policy. And there have been requests in the past. I don't recall if they were the exact same circumstances, but it's not unusual. We both agree that these requests have come forth in the past. So, this is not, you know, new.
Would the policy then, so then the applicant would go through the zoning board first and then come to us? Is that how that would work?
I'd look to Council to answer those questions.
Maybe we can set it up any way you want, but the zoning board would be the appropriate place to vet all that out. The appropriateness, the surroundings, you know, all of those things. That's, that's public hearing-type zoning stuff.
Well, because I also think it should have to go through the sheet.
Right, I agree.
What's it called?
Council, is it, is it possible tonight to approve a temporary request of 90 or however many days you recommend and with the board directing you and the administrator to draft some policies?
Absolutely. The only issue is, even on a temporary basis, we're gonna need to erect a sign if it's...
That should be a problem.
No, that shouldn't be a problem. We should be able to get a sign up.
So, I got one question, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
So, if we were to apply the prerequisite of putting up a handicap sign to the checklist of the zoning committee, how does that, like, if you get a placard from the state that says, hey, this person's disabled, they have no house parking, like, how would the, how would the zoning board trump the state saying there's no, there's a hardship, there's no on-street parking?
I guess request a variance.
The state issues handicap placards, that's, that's a state-controlled thing. So, if we decide where handicap spaces are gonna be allocated on public streets, so, you know, I would think that you would need to prove that you have a handicap placard if you're going to apply. That would be part of the checklist of, you gotta have that.
That's my point. So, if they meet all those criteria and they come to us, like, why would we even send them to the zoning board if they have met all the state requirements? I mean...
I think you could put that in your policy, Trustee Weisenberg.
What, I'm asking, why would we? It would be a waste of the zoning board's time if they've already got the state saying, yes, they're disabled, yes, they need priority parking.
Yes, but, so I think, I get what you're saying, but we don't have to, the difference is, is we don't have to approve the parking spot.
Well, I understand.
So, like, going to the zoning board would be, like, are we going to approve this parking spot in a residential neighborhood?
Is it inappropriate in that case?
Yeah, it's not, it's not ours, is there need there? It's not, is there need? It's, are we going to, you know, provide relief for that need? That's why you would go to the zoning board.
Okay.
And they ask a different set of questions, too, right? Like, factifying, findings of facts, like, right? Like, there's a whole different, like, process that they go through that we aren't thinking about, because, like, we're thinking of it, like, from heart.
Right. We don't, we don't got the zoning hat on. I understand.
Do you have one or two vehicles, just one vehicle?
We have two vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but we would only request the spot for one, for Gary's vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah, because he goes back and forth to work and then whenever we go out, if we're together, we usually have my car.
I think, yeah, I think there's certain, certain situation where you don't have any ability to park anywhere else. Now, I think the problem was, you know, we couldn't guarantee that spot for Gary's vehicle.
Oh, absolutely.
Right? So, that would be, even if we did that, it would still be a handicap spot available for...
For anybody.
But, you know, I think if the board's not prepared, if they, I mean, whatever, I mean, with some of the things that Ms. Roush has said, there are some ordinance issues outside of what's going on, need to be addressed. One, cars being there for two to three weeks, it's not allowed.
On register.
Having cars that are not, or registered or have expired tags, not allowed. More than three cars parked on the street that belong to a certain person, believe it or not, that's not allowed either. So, all of those things need to be addressed, it sounds like, outside of this.
And plus, there's an apartment complex that's right next to us, on the other side of us, and so, of course, we've got all of those cars, you know, all those vehicles that are parking out there, too. So, it makes it hard for us, you know, to get a place to park. And I understand it's public parking, so it's first come, first served, but that's also another reason why we're requesting this out in front of the house.
So, and Mrs. Roush, I don't mean to cut you off.
That's okay.
Looking at your, and Wayne saying this brought it to my attention, I believe your home is within TIF District 1. And so, this, you know, I've had discussions with a few people about looking for ways to use some funds for residential projects and I think this could be something that...
This is actually why we created, we expanded the TIF, was to include residences in the TIF.
And this TIF district is the oldest TIF district in the village and so there's a ticking clock with how soon that these funds can be used. So, there may be other possibilities to address the problem.
Okay, good. And see, I had thought about, you know, the driveway, like, in the front, but I wasn't sure, like, as far as the sidewalk, you know, how we would go about that and get the entrance into the driveway, if that's something that we would take care of, or since the sidewalk is basically public property, so I didn't know, like, as far as the curb and things like that goes. How...
That's something we can work out with you.
Okay.
I feel like I'm not ready to vote on this personally, for myself, just because I feel like there's more information, right? Like, I want to know, like, what a policy would look like. I want to know, like, are there things that we could, like, help with, like, whether it's TIF or whatever? So, for me, I would move to defer.
And not only this, I just thought of this, something Trustee Wigginton had said, that if we do put handicap parking there, it doesn't necessarily say that he's the only one.
It's exclusively for the family.
Right.
Right.
So, as, you know, as busy as the street gets, if someone's looking for a place to park to go have dinner, there's this open handicap spot and they happen to have a handicap placard for whatever reason.
Or are they parking in compliance?
They've got a spot.
Well, we'd also have to figure out a way, if, you know, if we came up with a policy that you'd have to apply annually, because people do move.
Right.
And I don't know that you'd have that spot there indefinitely, but maybe you would. But again, I tend to agree with the deferral, but again, I would ask you to consider that we could give a 90-day or 120-day one-time permit, if that's what you would like to do. That would help alleviate their problem, that would give us time to then to develop a policy. And if the policy in the future wouldn't include, it wouldn't qualify, then the special permit would come back.
I feel comfortable with a 90-day. I think that gives us time to look at this and maybe try to figure out other solutions, alternative solutions, because we all are very sympathetic to your request.
And to be clear, you are open to other solutions as well?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. If we can get, if we can get a driveway put up there, I mean, we'd be more than open to that, because then that would, that would actually bring him closer.
Yeah, well, that's, that was my thought, too, yeah. Because you have quite a decent-sized front yard for him to walk up anyway, so...
Now, do you own all the way to the apartment complex?
Yes.
It looks like there's almost two lots there.
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna need to amend this. Are you open to the amendment?
I'm open to an amendment.
Well, I'd ask you to make an amendment, please.
So, from what I understand, they'll, I agree for, I will amend my motion to limit it to a 90-day probationary or period for, for this, which would expire...
Trustee Wigginton, I had in mind going a little longer. Normally, I would say shorter, but I think this is probably something that the newly seated board should probably talk about. I can go either way on that, but if you want to go 60 or 90 days.
I understand.
But I asked for 120 for that reason.
Okay. Oh, okay, then, sure, I can do a 120. When does, when does your tag expire, Ms. Tammy?
The end of July.
End of July?
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe we just do it that, to the end of July?
But again, then I'm gonna be leaning on you to work with Council and the administrator and the, your fellow trustees to start drafting some things that, so we don't wait, we get this draft done fairly soon, while it's fresh in our minds, and keep Chief Sutton in the loop. Does that make sense?
It certainly does. And I think, I think for Ms. Roush and your particular situation, there are certainly things that would benefit Mr. Roush and benefit your property going maybe the route that I was discussing.
To put it in the driveway? Mm-hmm.
So, if I may, I would ask for a motion to allow, permit this for 120 days, directing staff to come back with draft proposals for the board to consider.
Okay, yeah, that sounds, that sounds like a good amendment.
Is that okay, Council?
Yes.
Okay.
Does it need a second? If it does?
I need a second on the amendment.
Second.
All right, on the amendment only. Any discussion on the amendment? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll on the amendment.
Just a moment, Mayor. All right, Mayor, Trustee Wigginton, if you would let me know if this is the correct amendment for you?
Sure.
Okay. I have down that it is an amendment to approve a probationary handicap sign valid for 120 days, with the condition staff bring back the issue and a policy to the board for full approval.
That sounds exactly it.
Okay, thank you.
And before you call the roll, then, Council, in my mind, this expires in 120 days. The sign comes down unless, unless the board adopts policy.
Correct.
All right. Chris, you understand that, too?
Yes, I do.
And Chief? All right, call the roll, ma'am.
All right, this is a vote on the amendment. Trustee De Boer?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All that passes. Now, back to the main motion as amended. Madam Clerk.
All right, this is on the motion as amended. Trustee De Boer?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you all. Thanks for being here tonight. We're gonna figure something out to help you long-term, okay?
Okay, so then where do we go from here as far as the discussion about possibly putting in the driveway?
Chief? They've met all the criteria with PD, right?
Correct.
So, then that would go to Director Aldrich, right? And myself for TIF?
No, Public Works put up a sign.
Oh, yeah, to put up a sign. She asked about the possibility of a driveway.
About possibly putting in a driveway, because if the policy doesn't-
I think we have a lot, we, we probably want to have some discussions on that.
Okay.
Um, we, that also has never been done, uh, so-
Well, but is a TIF, is a driveway a TIF-eligible expense? I'm not sure.
I'm not certain if it is, but we will find out from-
I mean, it doesn't, it's probably not gonna increase the value of the home, but, I don't know. That's normally the argument.
Yeah, I don't think that that's, that's their concern, is-
Uh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's not the concern. What, 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 I guess basically what I'm asking is, do we contact you guys then to find out what the next step is? Or will someone contact us?
Uh, well, you can get an application from Wayne. You might, he might need a few, a couple of days to think about that. I'm not certain that's a TIF-eligible expense, but he's the expert.
Okay.
But if it's, if it's something that you wanted to take on personally, if that were something that you wanted to pursue personally, then I think you just call administration.
Oh, Sarah will, Sarah will help with any building permitting, yes.
Right.
I, I would say, you know, just without double-checking, you know, there's a curb cut. We used to call these curb cut permits. So, you know, that, that part could be public, including sidewalk and cutting the curb and new curb. That seems like it's a TIF-eligible thing.
That, but the driveway itself?
Putting a driveway in typically is a, is a private issue. So, I mean, I'm just recalling what, you know, we've done in other municipalities that worked in.
I would say if, if there used to be a house next door to you where the empty lot is, there might be already an approach cut into the sidewalk that's just going to grass now. If that's a possibility, that would be-
I don't, I don't believe there is.
Okay, yeah, I mean, clearly we'd have to look, but, I mean, that's just a thought, you know? You wouldn't have to-
And then do you guys, I'm sorry. Do you guys have a certain standard as far as what type of a driveway has to be?
I believe so, but, uh-
Okay.
Can't be gravel, can it be gravel?
Okay, all right. I know I'm asking more questions than, I'm just getting ahead of myself.
Although we have gravel driveways in the, yeah, but-
Yeah, that'd have been grandfathered.
Okay, all right.
We will get a temporary sign-up for sure, probably tomorrow. And then we'll have to call Julie to get a sign in the ground. But we'll definitely get something up there for you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I really think, I'm sorry, that we should research this and then reach back out to you, if that's okay. I think that that's, and if you wouldn't mind leaving your information, so we can get in contact with you.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, I believe Chief Sutton has our information, because we've talked to him in depth about this. And he actually was the one that turned us on to, you know, like, the information that we would need to bring here to you guys tonight. So, yeah, him and Sarah both have our contact numbers.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Wigginton, anything else under public safety?
Um, Mayor, we, we, obviously, we have, uh, Chief here with us. We also, uh, have Assistant Chief Thompson here as well. Um, so, uh, I don't have anything, I don't think we've had any major issues from police or fire.
Nope, uh, no issues from the fire department. Uh, I do have a little report for a grant that we are applying for, uh, through the Office of, uh, Austin, uh, sorry, Office of State Fire Marshal. Uh, so, it's a construction and renovation grant that we're applying for, up to $350,000. Um, basically, what we're looking for is to, uh, take down some walls in our, uh, office areas up here and combine them to make a, um, office for us to sit in, our day room. So that way, we're closer to our rigs, as well as a, uh, fitness area. And to knock down some walls in the base, that way we could fit an extra apparatus up here as well. So, uh, the application, uh, has been put in. Uh, we're getting bids through contractors right now, and, uh, it'll be due the 28th of February. So, if anybody has any questions, I can certainly answer those.
Would you, um, do you know if we have, as far as the village, as far as this grant is concerned, would the village have to contribute any?
No, no, there's no match through the village. It's 100% state-funded.
Perfect. Love those grants.
Anything else? You have one new, new hire, I believe, right?
Uh, yeah, so, um-
Who was here earlier, I don't see him now.
Uh, Assistant Chief Austin Centez and I were newly promoted to, uh, the rank of Assistant Chief. Um, and from here, we're just gonna go forward and basically rebuild our ranking structure and our, our organization as a whole, so.
Okay, thanks for the update. Anything else?
Chief, anything?
No, sir.
Nothing further, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we would be at Public Works. First, um, item is a notice of intent to award for lead service line replacement, L S L R. Trustee Reiker, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the notice of intent to award for the lead service line replacement.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, go right ahead, please.
All right, it looks like Water and Kern went out for bid. We received four bids back. Am I reading this right, Mr. Aldrich? Trying to not put so much on you. Uh, the first one was from Five Star Energy for $6,706.50. Next one was Walker Excavating Company, which came in at $8,658,000. Uh, J.C. Dillon came in at $39,0972. And then Hare Construction came in at $69,630. I'll let you take over now.
So, yes, thank you, so, um, yeah, Don Tallis here with Water and Kern. He can explain, little bit different kind of bidding here, um, but Don can explain that a little bit. And, uh, this is just, you know, one of several contracts we'll have for lead service line replacements, we think. So, we're using grant funding or, uh, revolving loan funding for this, 100% forgiveness. So, this will be one of, uh, several lead service line replacement projects we anticipate. So, Don, if you could explain the-
Thanks, Wayne. Uh, yeah, a year ago, we put in an application with SRF for the lead service line. Uh, the village was granted a little over $2.2 million for that, for just this one round. Um, of that, just under $2 million is for construction. So, when you see that Five Star Energy Services bid with $6,700, kind of throws you off a little bit. Um, and that's because lead service line is like 180 from any other job. Typically, you have a known scope. So you're saying you're gonna lay 2,000 feet of pipe, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do this, how much? This one is, we have a cost or a price loan, but we don't know the scope of what they're gonna replace until they dig it up and find it. Because we have so many unknown service lines within the village limits that until they dig it up and see if it's lead or galvanized, then they don't know if they need to replace it. So what we did was, we had them bid on one item of each item we thought they were gonna use. So, one service line, private replacement, one public side, short and long, whether it's on the same side of the street or not. Um, but we broke that down into, as quantities of one, because we do not know how many they're gonna replace until they get into it. Um, and so that's why you see $6,700 is the low bid. But the actual contract price is what EPA gave you, which is just under $2 million. So they'll do $2 million worth of work, but at the unit pricing given in their bid.
How do you explain, I mean, I'm, maybe I'm just not reading it right. So, Five Star Energy Services gives us a bid for one for $6,700, basically?
Yep.
And then there's a delta, I mean, or there's a, a gap. Hare Construction comes in highest at $69,000?
Yeah, there was some confusion in the bidding, I think. But we had a pre-bid meeting to explain all of this stuff, every contractor, because it is something that they're not used to bidding on. Um, and what you'll see is, some of the contractors put, there is two items that are lump sum, which is mobilization, moving our equipment in and out, and traffic control. Some of them chose not to put any money in that, and they're just gonna sprinkle it through all their other stuff. And other ones put a dollar amount on that, and that rounded it up. Um, so it's just the way they bid on their pricing is the way it came out. We did do, uh, several reference checks on Five Star, 'cause we personally have never worked with them. All those came back favorable. Um, and then we also sat down with Five Star and went through all the bid items and thoroughly explained everything that they were gonna do and what they're gonna get paid for. And their response is, we, we've done plenty of these, we're comfortable with our pricing.
That's really remarkable.
Yeah, so, at the end of the day, we're, we take no exception with the village accepting the bid.
Well, that's, I'm glad you asked that question, because it, it sounds almost too good to be true in their bids. So, they're not going to come back after doing the work and say, there's more expense. This is what they get and they'll do it.
Yeah, we, we made sure that they thoroughly understood it before they accepted the, the bid. Um, and just for a reference in Monmouth, the low bid over there was a little over $7,000. So, it's not off the wall. It's just, it's just an odd way of bidding, based on standard construction.
So you, you think, you don't know, but you think that maybe Dillon and Hare didn't understand the scope of work is, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Do you know if they came to the, if those two contractors came to the pre-bid meeting?
I do not, I would have to look back. And in everything that was discussed in the pre-bid meeting, uh, there was a slideshow that we had. And then also, any notes, questions, or anything that was asked was put out for an addendum. So they had the information, even if they didn't show up, they had everything that was discussed.
Okay. Where is Five Star Energy from?
They're based out of Wisconsin, um, so that was another concern. Illinois has a rule that i-if they have two months of unemployment rates below 5%, or above 5%, sorry, then 90% of the workforce has to come from Illinois. And so, they're based out of Wisconsin, so that was another question that we had. And they said, we actually have an office in Rockford, and we'll pull all of our employees from there to do the work. So it's not an issue at all, uh, as it comes from that, so.
Okay, so they, you said that the other companies put in, like, the cost to bring their equipment in and out, but the, the lower two did not do that. So, do you take that as they've included that in their price? Or that they're gonna eat the cost, or they're gonna come back with a change order?
Nope, I, I asked that same question. And they said, we've, we've accounted for that in all of our bidding, and they're, that's it. I mean, they can't come back. I mean, they had an option to bid on it, and they, they chose to put zero for those.
Okay. Wow, thank you.
Well, I, I really appreciate Water and Kern doing this, uh, and going to the extent to make sure we're dealing with a responsible bidder.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think we all remember, we've had times where that due diligence wasn't performed before coming to the board.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, I appreciate that. I did have one question, though. Um, looks like, you know, just the checklist that you did, and it was multiple variables. One of them was certification of non-segregated facilities. And Hare and Walker had no, but J.C. Dillon and Five Star Energy had yes. What is a non-segregated facility?
I would have to look back.
Okay. Okay, no problem. But our guys have it, so I guess that's good, I don't know.
Anyone else? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reiker?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution 2025-04. A resolution of the Village of Peoria Heights approving a professional services agreement with Water, Water Capital Program and Grant Administration. Trustee Reiker, I'd ask for a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-04.
One second, please.
Second.
All right, thank you, go right ahead, trustee Reiker.
Um, I'm gonna send this over to Wayne, I think. This one, I'm gonna have to go.
So, um, really, you know, when we have an aggressive water capital program like we're proposing, uh, you either need a fairly substantial staff, or you need to hire professional services out. So that's the basis of this, uh, agreement. We're happy with the services provided by Water and Kern. They've gotten us a lot of grants and, uh, other, uh, loans from the EPA. And so, and they're a very qualified firm, especially in the, in the world of water.
All we do is water.
Yes, so, um, so this, uh, agreement, again, is sort of like putting on Water and Kern as extended employees in a way you can think of that, uh, with, with our oversight, certainly. But, uh, to perform this work, and it includes, uh, things that sometimes staffs do, engineering management services, which would be budgeting, help with annual budgeting. As far as the water capital program, what are we gonna do this year? How much do we think it's gonna cost? Uh, construction management services for, uh, actual projects on a case-by-case basis. Regulatory compliance, uh, again, cost estimation, budget control. And then I think, uh, another thing that, you know, staff really appreciates is grant oversight and administration. So, some of these things Water and Kern is expert at, working with EPA and other agencies, staff isn't. And it's a lot of work sometimes, you know, doing grant administration for these types of specialized grants, working with all the agencies, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, so, that's what this, uh, proposal includes. Um, and I think it'll be a big help, and I, I would say it's necessary for a village the size of Peoria Heights to do this, uh, type of work and have them, uh, a firm like Water and Kern help with this, to assure that we can get the projects complete.
And the way that we do this is, um, you know, we don't do any work unless you tell us to. And then if you say, hey, we have this project, what do you think it's gonna cost? We'll give you a proposal of what we think we're gonna have in it, so you know upfront. And then we'll move forward if you, if you agree. I mean, that's the way it is. If you don't need us, we don't do the work.
So, it's more of like a numeric, like, we're saying not to exceed $80,000, but there's not necessarily a duration of spending this $80,000.
It's on an annual basis.
Yeah, to an annual, yeah.
Yeah, so, and, and the way firms, uh, like Water and Kern does is they have an hourly rate that they apply to this.
Yeah, we can give you that.
As they work an hour, they apply that rate, plus, I think, some-
Yeah, it all depends on what staff level is doing that type of work.
Is this kind of changing us from, like, bidding each thing that they do for us to-
No, it's, it's, it's just this particular professional services aspect. So, there will also be, and Water and Kern will probably want to do some, many or most of these projects, is engineering services, like, putting together bids like they did for the lead service line. That will be a separate type of a proposal, uh, for each individual project, which I think's appropriate. And then, uh, there will still be bids for construction contracts.
Okay, I understand that. So what I guess, what I'm asking is, like, the work from Water and Kern in the past, they've come to us and said, we're gonna do these tasks for $60,000. So does this replace that, or this is gonna be one thing? And then when we need to engineer Prospect Road, then there'll be another, like, we're gonna do these tasks for $60,000?
It'll be a separate proposal process, whether it's-
For their work, not for bidding and stuff like that.
Yes, so, again, this is, uh, purely professional services at a higher, I would say, kind of a higher level.
Kind of more of an administration type-
So you're project managing the grants, and how-
Whatever you need us to do, that, you know, from the engineering side of it, we'll do in grant.
So this is just basically miscellaneous services, not to exceed $80,000 a year?
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's a good-
You can look at it that way, but again, this is, if, if this was a bigger community, there'd be engineering staff and other grant administrators on staff to do it. So we just don't have that, and it's, we wouldn't want to put on staff like that anyway. So this is to supplement that.
No, I got it.
And if you did have staff that wanted to tackle it and just need our assistance helping out, that's, we'll do what, you know, whatever you guys need.
And I, I've been very pleased with your firm and, and your work. But just, I, I think the board's familiar with, um, the firm. For everyone watching at home and in the audience, would you just, um, tell us a little bit about the firm and what you've done for us, and what your role has been with the village, and where we're hoping to go in the future?
Sure. Um, so Water and Kern as a whole, we're water engineering firms. We do industrial, environmental, wastewater, drinking water, anything, stormwater, water-related, that's what we do. Um, but we do have a funding team that goes out and finds us pots of money wherever we can, and we try to get to work. Um, and then in the past, we did a CIP for you guys, for your water program, and looked at, uh, things that we could do over a five-year and up to a 20-year project to help the whole water system. One of those things that's in a queue right now is the filtration plant for the magnesium. Um, we reached out back at the EPA last week to see where that's at. Um, they had one internal thing they said that they needed to clean up. But the intended use plan that they have, which sets their budget for the next year, comes out. The draft comes out in June with the final in July after a 30-day comment period. Um, so we're hopeful. It's, it's approved project, it just hasn't been funded yet. So we're hopeful that come July, it's funded, and we can do just like this, uh, lead service line. And, you know, next fall, get a contract, get it out to bids, and, and get somebody working on it, so.
Thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, and then we'll also do the same lead service line every year until the money runs out, or until you tell us to stop.
So as everyone knows, this is a, a long process of improving our entire water system. And I have, as I stated, I've been very pleased with them. But I think it's also very important to hold any professional service, whether it's, uh, engineering or law, and now, uh, water consultant, someone has to be paying very close attention that they're doing the work we're asking them to do. So, I don't think it ever hurts if you're disappointed in that, to go out and request for qualifications from other firms. I'm not suggesting that at all right now, but, um, because they've done, I think, excellent work. But that's an option in the future, if you're ever not happy with their performance.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Is this, the funding for this, um, is this coming out of, are we aware if this is coming out of water funds? Or is this coming out of?
This'll come out of water funds, and it'll be a part of, you know, the water funding program.
Okay.
Which, which, again, Water and Kern will help us with the program every year. And then also, you know, every so often, we'll look at fee structure, again, see how we're doing with that.
And trustee Wigginton, as you know, this is a multifaceted approach. Not only are they advising us, they're also helping us find, um, sources of, of, um, grants. That's part of Wayne's job, it's part of Mike Bailey's job, it's, you know, part of our role as electeds to be working with our federal lobbyists, who, um, we're also working with state and federal officials, too. So there's, there's a lot going on here. We're all approaching different sources and relying on different, um, people, uh, to help us in obtaining grant money.
Thank you, Mayor. And though, I think we've talked about your, your keep working until the, the, you know, you're told to stop, or the money runs out. Now, reading over this, it looks like to me, just reading on the face, is that this is a project cost not to exceed $80,000, uh, to execute necessary documents and proposal. Um, I don't see that it, it's an annual $80,000, based on just the reading of it. It looks like it's just a one-time.
It should say annual if it's not. So, um, you know, you guys have budgets every year. If you get to that point where you don't want to keep going with it, that's certainly in your eye. And you do have the right to cancel it at any time, um, as, as far as the terms and conditions, so.
Okay.
Do you agree with that answer, council? Do you agree with that answer, Council?
I do. The, first of all, we can terminate it anytime. Yes, we added that, actually, and they cooperated, and that hasn't been added. Our, you know, our rights terminated anytime. The real rubber meets the road in the attached scope of services, and it's revenue says fiscal year 25. We're on fiscal year, not calendar year. They did fiscal year, so I think it's fair to read it as, you know, it's $80,000 that is funded for a scope of service that only includes fiscal year 25. So, I think that's a fair reading. But it is hourly bill, just like my fees are billed by the hour, and we can terminate it anytime. We're not committing $80,000. We're not to exceed $80,000 for the fiscal year. It could be $20,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, what we found in the past was, you know, some years you may only use $30,000. Other years, you may have a lot of grants, you might have more, so you might exceed the 80, and then you guys still have to approve us to go over the 80, you know. But if you have a heavy year of, you know, funding or any kind of engineering services, it's up to you whether you exceed that in any given year.
Thank you.
And our fiscal year ends when? The 30th of April?
April.
Yeah.
Yeah, fiscal year 25 ends April 30th, 2025.
Yes, it should say fiscal year 26, but...
Do we need to amend that? Are you comfortable with it?
Yeah, I mean, it would...
Are you okay with just making the clerk note that rather than an amendment?
I don't know that it needs, I think we can work with you to amend the scope of service.
We can amend it any way you want. So if you want us to switch it to 26 and it goes April to April, or is that what your budget cycle typically is it?
May 1 to April 30.
May 1 to April 30. Yeah, we can do that if that's.
But we want you to work now. So I'm mindful of that, but I'm reluctant to be back here a month from now or two months from now renewing this, so.
How about just putting an expiration of next year, April 30th, and if we exceed the 80, then we come back to you for...
We'll fix fiscal.
So does everyone agree about that correction?
Or maybe pro bono until then.
All right, so we're okay with just a clerk correcting that, Council?
Yes.
All right. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, call the roll, please.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trustee Reichert, anything else?
Well, that's it, unless...
Thank you.
Mr. Lieutenant Chandler has anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
I have one item, Mayor. So Prospect Road, I think I reported, well, we approved the contracts with the state, so the state has given us a conditional approval to proceed. So you will see perhaps survey crews out doing their work as early as maybe next week, and we'll have some kickoff meetings with Hanson Engineers and their subconsultants. So that project will start.
Those will be, okay, our engineers, not IDOT engineers.
Right, yeah, it's basically our project, and IDOT just has oversight.
Wayne, just for the sake of Trustee Weisberg, would you say that's phase two?
You know, I was gonna ask the same question.
That's a gray area.
It's the start of phase one.
It's still phase one.
Always phase one.
I'm gonna use phases, I don't know what else I use, but this is still.
I hope to see a phase two someday.
But it's phase one in action. I was gonna say, in action. Phase one in action. Oh, so like phase one point one.
Yeah, right.
Another item, Mayor, real briefly, is our HUD, Healthy Homes contract, you know, we've been struggling through that and struggling to find contractors that will help Peoria Heights with our particular ordinances out. So we issued another request for qualifications, that's the third one on this project. So we did find a contracting group. We've worked with them before, Mid Illinois Companies, who's qualified.
Bobby Taylor?
Yes, qualified in every way, so they're gonna be helping us out with the HUD, Healthy Homes.
That's good, and they've done some work for us around Village Hall, so they're a good company.
So soon you'll see an agreement with them, probably, yeah.
Thank you. All right, we would be miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous business?
I have something, Mayor. Actually, initially, I thought I wasn't going to be here this evening, so this was not on the agenda, but it gives us an opportunity just to introduce this possibility to the board. So Peoria County approached the village probably about a week ago, week and a half ago, and they are, they have an initiative to celebrate the bicentennial of the community, and, or Peoria County, rather. And so in this initiative, they, it's an art project, and they are selling for $2,500 these enormous fiberglass bison, which you all have this in front of you. It kind of reminds me of the, in the late 1999, they did this in Chicago with cows. But, so the village, the proposal would be the village and other entities can purchase a bison for $2,500 and then decorate it, and it would be on display probably outside because it has to be accessible for ADA, but could be inside. I think in our case, if we elected to do this, we would be great to have it in Tower Park, and then have it decorated by a local artist or someone like that. And it is a great way to generate tourism and that type of thing, and celebrate our history. They already have done two of these. They're on display at the Peoria Riverfront Museum. Two separate artists decorated them. And then earlier today, I reached out to Barb Malaccio to see if she had a recommendation of a local artist, and she put me in touch with actually a Heights resident who is, she is kind of a sculptress, but she also works in other medium. I had a nice talk with her, and I can send her biography to all of you before the next meeting. And I asked her to write up her proposal, or we could, I get suggestions from all of you about other artists that might be interested in doing this. I would also like Trustee Reichert to take this possibility to the school. I think this would be really neat for the school to buy one of these as well and have your art department do this. I think if we could get four or five of these in our community, it could be very exciting. So I don't know if anyone has any questions for me. I'll try to answer them.
So is the $2,500 just the cost of it?
It's the cost of the actual fiberglass bison. You can see kind of from this image that it's quite large. I don't know, it doesn't say how much it weighs, but they are working with Woodruff to move these from place to place. They, Woodruff will actually move the bison to the artist's studio, wherever that is, and then take it to a location.
Who's actually constructing them?
I think that, you know, I don't know if they're...
Yeah, Woodruff, I believe.
Pardon me?
I think it Woodruff.
Woodruff is constructing them?
I believe so.
Okay. What, then is it, are we hoping that artists would then volunteer their time, or we would have to pay the artists? I, you know, that's a good question, and I think it varies from artist to artist. I mean, obviously, it's an advantage to have your work out there in the community, but it's also a tremendous, this is an effort, and this is, you know, I mean, it's gonna take some labor. I would expect to pay for the materials. I wouldn't ask an artist to, you know, pay for their own materials, and I think they would probably want some compensation. I know, I inquired about the two different bison that have been painted already and are on display at the Riverfront Museum, and I believe both of those artists have been paid. I had indirect communication with one, and I know that she was paid. I mean, can we, before our next meeting, can we get like a cost estimate on what we would think like it would cost to do that? And then how long do these stay in the community and what happens to them when this is over? So we own them. I mean, if we purchase one, we would own it. We are required to have it on display till the end December, I think, the end of December 2025, because it's in celebration of this event. And then if we would like to keep it, we can keep it, or they will put them, I believe, on display at Wildlife Prairie Park, which is cool.
I would think you'd wanna keep it either here in Tower Park or maybe put it near the library on the trail, but I think it's something we wanna do nicely and probably have some expense in building a pad for it. You probably wanna put it on a pad, but...
This really plays into our, you know, ace corridor with arts, culinary, and entertainment. We're already at our community with displayed art on the outside, so I think this is an initiative.
Depending on what you wanna do with it, that could be a BDD eligible expense. It doesn't generate any sales tax, so I don't know, but it could be.
Well, it could indirectly.
It could be an eligible expense.
It could attract people to your community. I mean, I think it's awesome. I remember when the cows were a thing, and like, I think it's, yeah, so I would be interested to see.
Well, I pulled it from the agenda simply because I didn't think Trustee Kazam was going to be here, but I'm just thinking out loud that, you know, maybe you'd wanna do one or two, maybe you'd wanna put one at the trail, and the library doesn't have a whole lot of extra money like we do. Would you wanna put one there, or would you wanna put one elsewhere within the village? But I appreciate Trustee Kazam bringing that up because I'd like you to all think about it.
And we've approached the chamber as well, so they may be interested in doing one. So if we had a few of these in our community, I think it could be pretty exciting.
It could be a lot of fun, yeah.
I think the school should do one, too. I really do.
So, I think we, I mean, as far as, and I don't wanna tear any money from any other park plans, but we, I think we do have some money in parks, right?
Do we?
Thank you for pointing that out, Travis.
That's a surprise.
But, you know, I definitely think we should keep it because, and I was talking to Trustee Reichert, I think Teddy Roosevelt had something to do with bison. I think he was the one, started Buffalo and trying to protect Buffalo in his administration.
Parksman.
Yeah.
National Parks.
Starting up the national parks. So there could be some tie into that. We could play on that a little bit. I don't know.
You think they can make us a statue of Teddy to stand with it?
I'm sure. We know people who could do that, but not for free.
There's a statue out there.
It'll stand with the bison.
But again, it's, I want you to all think about this, because it is the 200th anniversary of Peoria County, and I would expect these things to stay in the community, our community, for a long time. I'd hate to turn it over to go elsewhere. So, you know, maybe Poplar Park, maybe Tower Park, maybe Lions Park, you know, so.
The Buffalo Rome.
Yeah.
And the Wildflowers.
Also, I just wanna say that the artist I spoke to is Morgan Elser, and she is a resident of the Village of Peoria Heights. As I said previously, they live at the bottom of, oh my gosh, the park, Forest Park Nature Center, right across there from the apartments. And we are welcome to go see her sculptures anytime, so if we wanna go take a look and see if it's something that appeals to us. But she's had work displayed in Washington, DC. She has work displayed in Morton. I wrote it down. Let me just see. She did the, let's see, the, she did a veterans memorial at a hospital in Hope Dell, Illinois, the Giving Tree in Morton, Illinois, which I have not seen in person, but I've heard it's beautiful. She has work displayed in DC. She did the Head of Christ for the 700 Club. She's an international artist, which is interesting, wonderful, but she's local. So I like that she's from our community. Yeah, right.
I like that idea, but I mean, you could also, if you got a couple of them, I think you could ask for, request for proposals on them and approve, you know, different people. But it could be fun to have some competition of what different artists have their vision for.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
So is there a consensus in to bring this back to put on the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much, Trustee Kazam.
Do we know how long, sorry, do we know how long a fiberglass statue lasts in the elements?
Let's ask the engineer sitting to your right.
If it's, especially if it's protected from the sun, you know, indefinitely, I would say.
Yeah, fiberglass is very hard. The paint on it might not last as long.
Yeah, that's true. But as long as it's protected, sealed, whatever, I think it lasts for a long time.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you all. Any other miscellaneous?
Yeah, I got a question. Assistant Chief Thompson, you said that two assistant chiefs have recently been promoted?
Correct.
Have we had two assistant chiefs in the past?
Yes. It was Chief Schott and Chief Carlson.
Okay.
At the same time. In fact, at one point under Chief Walters, I believe we had four.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
Trustee Wigginton, is this just for me, or is this, does everyone have this?
No one, that was the discussion, so I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. So two meetings ago, Trustee Kazam offered to meet with me to talk a little bit about the business development district, some of my concerns that I'm chronically raising. I did sit down with Trustee Kazam and Director Aldridge, bringing some material from other villages that, you know, range from point system as to what gets favored, and they had variables on, has this person requested recently, if so, minus so many points, is this gonna be a tax, sales tax producing, this gets so many points, is it a complete refurb, so many points, is it just a rehab, so many points. So that was like an internal document from another municipality that I was able to find publicly. And then there were other, other things that were made from other municipalities that showed maybe how sales tax does go into the equation. So we had a nice discussion. We're still hashing out kind of maybe how to make it easier for people like we used to, for just signage and maybe exterior improvements, rather than having to do a whole redevelopment agreement, making it simpler, so saves on maybe some legal fees as well. And then maybe having a more in-depth approach to how do we scale some of this. So, but we did have that discussion, so thank you for reaching out, Trustee Kazam, and setting up that meeting.
On that topic, could I maybe propose maybe a radical idea? Why don't, the BDD and the 1% sales tax, that was something that, when started, it was governed by the businesses. They had a quorum, they managed it. That, from what I understand, is dissolved, gone away. There wasn't enough interest.
I created that committee simply because they didn't think they had buy-in and invited people to participate, but there was a lack of participation.
There was a lack of participation, that's kind of dissolved. And we know the 1% sales tax on groceries is going away, which we absolutely depend on. I make, I propose that we do away with the BDD 1%, and in turn, use that 1% to fund the 1% we're gonna lose. Because currently, that doesn't flow back into the village in a way, the 1% for the BDD, and then not have to raise taxes.
You have to take one off and put one on. Correct, Council, I mean.
Yeah, if you do away with the BDD's 1% sales tax, you're eliminated from the BDD.
Right.
I don't really...
Then we reinstitute it, because we're gonna lose the 1% for the groceries.
You're proposing to take off a BDD tax and impose a grocery tax, a local grocery tax.
It would still be one down, right?
But I mean, some of those, some things are getting 1% grocery tax and 1% BDD tax right now.
Right.
So it won't, like, I think we're gonna have to impose our own 1% grocery tax, period.
We certainly can.
And then keep the BDD to keep it at the same level of income that we're getting from that current.
But BDD is a restricted fund.
Right, it's a restricted fund.
Sales tax is not restricted.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So you wanna raise sales taxes?
No, 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 not necessarily. I wanna unrestrict those funds, so that when we lose the grocery tax, we can use the funds that are now going into a pot.
I don't think you can do that, but I'll look over, I don't think you can take, you take current funds?
No, no, not current funds. We sunset it. We keep the funds in there, we keep divvying out the...
So what you're saying, and I don't mean to interrupt, you wanna do, raise the food and beverage tax and eliminate the BDD tax, which is the same tax for food, but then you freed up the funds.
Correct.
And then you're not passing, because if you raise the grocery tax, you're passing that on to the residents, so.
Because right now, we take all that money, that 1%, which has been quite a bit of money.
Well, it's just gotten to be.
Right.
It's just gotten to a point where we can actually do something with it. We're just getting there, which is very exciting.
And I'm not saying take that money now and give it to the general fund. That's not what I'm saying. If we decided to do this, we'd sunset it. We'd keep that money, keep divvying out, as we've been doing. But at some point, we're gonna lose the grocery tax money.
That's going away.
Repurposed.
We're, well, two things are happening. We're losing the grocery tax money, but we're also losing the grocer. So I don't know. I mean, we, right now...
Well, they're not the only grocers. We got Allwinds.
That's true.
Right.
Well, and that tax is imposed on food items, so.
Right. Just a thought, I mean.
No, well, I think it's helpful to bring these things up. I need to know more what you're, I'm a little confused, and I would be really cautious in, I think it'd be very helpful, helpful to have a discussion about BDD. Now, you know, when I came on board and some of the others of us, the BDD didn't have a whole lot of funds in it, and we were pretty restrictive in what we were wanting to do. So, you know, that's when, and I was more of a like mind, that if we're gonna be spending that BDD money, it should be something that's gonna generate more sales tax. But that fund has grown by leaps and bounds. I think it's a million two or a million three roughly now. What I would say to you is, I've never believed that government should hoard money. Now, that money is and has been and will be very important in economic development agreements, and using that money... agreements, and using that money to be very helpful to improve the business development district. That being said, if the board is gonna be stingy in distributing those funds, then I would, I would think you might wanna lower the tax, but doing away with it, I think, I really encourage you to give that a lot of thought, because TIF money is so restricted, and it should be, in how, what is eligible and what is not eligible, but those BDD funds are less restrictive, and we've been able to get very creative, and I'll point out, very creative with the BEC oil development, which again, it's probably not the most sexy or glamorous development that's ever happened in the village, but it's probably gonna generate more sales tax in many ways, including the 1% BDD. It's gonna be a, literally, a boatload of money for the Village of Peoria Heights annually, and that 1% that they're gonna generate is huge, just from that one project, but that helped us in many ways to land that project, and you know, there's, our sister city is scrambling as hard as they can to entice BECs, and we were way out in front on that. So many things in the, in the tool belt and toolbox that we've utilized to help do some development, but that, that's really, trustee Weisenberg, and I appreciate you because you think outside the box and look at things from a different angle, but that has really helped us, helped small business, helped small family-owned businesses.
Yeah, no, and I don't dispute that, it's just, you know, we think of the sales tax, we've only got a certain amount of sales tax, right? And we got 1% locked up in the BDD, and we have 1% that we're gonna lose on the groceries. So I mean, I was just thinking, if we're losing the grocery, and the sales tax is generated by consumers, and, you know, our main priority is fire, police, public works, why continue to consume that 1%, giving it back to the businesses when there is significant needs in fire and police services that citizens rely on? That was, that was my thought process.
I'm willing to have a Saturday morning session and, you know, walk through a lot of this stuff and have administration show us the different pots of money and where those revenues come from, and just a, you know, a big, big picture conversation. And I wouldn't say, I wouldn't just say that the grocery store is going away. Now, again, this is market-driven, there's new owners for the property.
Right.
The developers have assured me, they have asked Save-A-Lot to stay, and if not Save-A-Lot, another grocer, but this is all, you know, the people in Peoria Heights, including myself, we all have to be focused that we support Peoria Heights businesses, including this grocery store. Probably one of the best things we could all do is to reach out to Save-A-Lot specifically and say, will you please stay here? But Mr. Aldridge and I have both personally done that with Save-A-Lot, and I told Wayne, you know, when we would drive or go anywhere and meet them anywhere in the state or on their home territory, to talk to them about staying here, so, and honestly, that could be incentivized with BDD money if they were to stay, so.
It's kind of a, kind of a mute point to, I didn't say the grocery was leaving trustee Kazam did.
I think that wasn't.
But it's kind of a mute point, because we're losing the tax anyway.
But there are other.
Well, but that'd be a tax increase.
Well.
Essentially, and I don't necessarily, I'd rather utilize the taxes we have, including the BDD, instead of the state reducing the tax and then us increasing the tax.
One thing on the BDD that I think is gonna be incredibly crucial, and I think back, this was before I was on the board, but trustee Weisenberg, trustee DeVar, trustee Kazam, you all were here, was during COVID, and during that period of time, a lot of businesses were helped to stay afloat because they were given grants from the BDD fund. I think looking ahead, and this is something I've asked director Aldridge about, if we're gonna proceed with the Prospect Road project, and we tear up Prospect Road, and we limit traffic on that road, and we limit people being able to walk around on that road, these businesses are gonna be hurting really bad. So I think potentially having that BDD for something like that could make or break some of these businesses.
I don't necessarily disagree, but I think if you look at the optics, the state of Illinois says they're reducing the grocery tax because it's a regressive tax on poor people. So we're gonna say, okay, we're gonna reinstate that tax just to continue giving tax money essentially to rich businesses to put up signs. I just think we should utilize the tax revenue we have, and increasing taxes on essentially poor people to maintain that 1% for businesses is gonna be tough for me.
Well, not to argue with you, but a lot of people that ask for those grants are not rich businesses. I mean, I own two businesses on Prospect, I have received the grant, and I've never taken $1 of profit from my business in the six years that it's been open, so not everybody that asks for it is a rich business, just to put that out there. Number two, most municipalities, just to survive, because of what we have to do, have already kept the tax, too. So all these other municipalities have already passed to keep it because it's become so influential on like how it's affecting the budget. I don't know if you've looked into that a little bit, but I don't want it to say that like, oh, if we take away this tax and then we're just putting it back to be able to pay for rich people, like, that's not what it is, because the BDD is restricted to that, this grocery tax goes into the general fund. I understand your thought process on it, but it's coming back into like one picture when really it's two different pictures.
No, I totally understand that, but it's not gonna be a matter of us just putting the taxes back, the tax is gonna be eliminated, so we will have to increase sales tax, which we've all, I mean, the businesses came out here in full force opposing.
But it's not really increasing it if we, if we pass an ordinance that says the day that the state takes away the tax, that we would just maintain and keep the tax, so it's not an increase, it's an, we're, we're just keeping it, we're not actually taking it away.
Well, and I don't, and to that point, I don't know if there's gonna be a, if, if we, if we do lose a major grocer, then I don't know if we would really need to, we're gonna have to find where the money's gonna come from, and we're gonna have to maybe, Chris is gonna, not gonna have new Christmas decorations again.
There will be a hole in the budget, but I'm going to guess that every bit of that is already made up and in more than the BEC revenue from the BEC development. My point is, is that what those developers have in mind for that property and other properties in Peoria Heights, I believe, will generate more than what you will lose in property taxes and BDD and sales tax, and again, the whole rising tide lifting. I think the focus has to continue to remain on economic development to help pay the bills, and if you do that, and you're strategic in continuing to develop the properties that we have, and get the right developers here, which I think we have in most ways, that's, that's the way to alleviate that problem. That's gonna be temporary for a year or two, but keep doing the things we're doing, and that's gonna generate more revenue, and it's obvious. You know, the administrator told me recently that we're looking at a surplus this year. So that's where you all should be committed, you've been diligent in having good conversations about how things should be spent, you've been very focused on strategic planning and goals and objectives, you've been asking good questions on BDD and how it's been spent. The brand of Peoria Heights is increased in value probably tenfold in 10 years or so. So by providing good services, having low taxes, having a walkable, safe community, all those things are important to developers and people looking to relocate their businesses, and I can't emphasize enough how many people talk to me that, whether they're in law or they're in finance or their insurance, that they'd like to have their company here. The problem is, we don't have a lot of land and properties to work with, but you've done very well increasing the value of the brand, and that's what you have to focus on and continue to focus on, good economic development projects, and it doesn't always have to, again, be bars and restaurants that the BECs development proves that. So I think that's, that's the main focus, but we do have to be, that's, it's a, it's a good amount of money that you're going to lose in revenue, but I think there's other ways around it. That's a long answer. Anyone else? There's still one in miscellaneous. All right, we would be at general comments from the audience. If anyone who's here tonight would like to make a general comment, please come forward, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. General comments. Going once, twice, general comments are closed. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Guys have it.
Hey, Chris.